Public Safety and Community Trust. What is your vision for improving public safety in our neighborhoods? In a way that also builds trust between residents, law enforcement, and community-based organizations? Harrison, you can answer that first.
Thank you. Well, you know, it's most secret and only years we've had issues as relates to the engagement between police and community. And fortunately, years, some places have gotten better, some places has not gotten better. But I'm proud to say, you know, before with our CDC, we had not had real interactions in neighborhood between residents and police except for, you know, there's programs that maybe they have with the Safety Fair or other things that they would host in neighborhood. But we got together with one of our organizers from our CDC in the past. This one, we had a different fifth district rep, Mr. Reynolds was rep at that time. And so we had revived the coffee with cops. We had revived the kickball with cops. We would hold our sessions over at the Humphrey Park, right behind where we are, right across the road where we are today. And so I, you know, I'm proud of that because that was able to bring people together, right? It was able to take down the barriers, you know, break down the walls that exist between community and police. Make no mistake about it, we need the police, right? I know we all have our own, you know, thoughts or concerns or suggestions. We need the police because when something happened, who's the first person we call? 911. And so it is important that we work together, hand in hand, to try to, you know, bring us together, right? Again, break down the walls, because if we have more in common than we do apart. So I can say that that's something that we were able to do in our neighborhood. And one of the things that we want to do to strengthen the community relations, the police relations of our community is continue to have more engagement. That's why my office, we worked a lot throughout the years to host different events with the police department. For example, we have the Halloween event coming up on the 31st. We've worked with them. Each and every year, we've been in office to hold spaghetti dinners and other things in the community. We've done that. And we want to continue some of that work that we've started. If elected again in November, we want to do more with the corresponding unit for Ward 10. So I would like to take funds of Ward 10 and launch a corresponding unit just for our neighborhood. And that unit will be made up of a crisis intervention specialist, along with a police, a peace officer, together to respond to issues that we have in our neighborhood. That they can be proactive. They can, you know, go out and work our streets when we're all sleeping at home, right? They can be visible. They can identify that problem, red card, and speeds up and down that street that cause problems every Friday and Saturday night. They know that house, that's a party house, that's happening in the neighborhood, that's every Thursday they get together, right? You know, they can do that proactive work for us in our neighborhood without being, you know, targeting individuals, right? And I believe that unit can build relationships. Like we have our community engagement officers for the neighborhood. With that unit can build relationships with us and the community. So that is one way we want to enhance the engagement in the neighborhood with our police officers.
Thank you, Councilman Harrison. Okay, so the floor is going to open. Do we have any rebuttals to what they just said? And again, this is about community policing?
Can I respond to that?
You didn't, no. Just making sure y'all paying attention. You see what I did there? That's called an accountability check.
I thought you skipped me there.
No, I didn't. I had to make sure that they were waiting, they were paying attention.
Let me respond, because public safety is a real issue with me. As chairman of public safety for Cleveland City Council, we have crisis intervention programs right now within the city. We have violence interrupters that we fund through the city. I'm very aggressive on law enforcement, everybody knows. I go to people's houses, I write the letters to the kids, I ask to sit down with the juveniles. At every one of our neighborhood meetings, we have the police officers at our neighborhood meetings. So we look about our police as partners. We're involved in this. We got to care about our men and women in blue. It's about transparency, it's about professional conduct, accountability. That's what it's all about. That's why I fought for the body cam, that's why I fought for the dash cams in the police cars, which I sponsored that. So those citizens who had concerns about how they're being treated, now the cameras don't lie. That's what people want. They want professional conduct. We have a lot of work to do in the area of public safety in the city. We're down, from what we've borrowed in 2000, around 700 police officers. Think about that. There are a couple retired police officers in attendance here. We got a lot of work, but I'm going to say this as well. We need parents to be engaged with their kids. When we got 12 and 13-year-old kids running the streets in the middle of the night, as we just saw with Elise Carbrake, you gotta ask yourself, wait a minute, you don't notice your 12 and 13-year-old is not in bed in the middle of the night? So we gotta quit making excuses. Together, there's gotta be accountability. I send out the letters, I do the visitations, I do everything I can to reach out to help kids and help families. But at the end of the day, we're gonna make, we're gonna turn the corner in some of these neighborhoods. We need parents who are gonna stand up and be accountable. We need citizens, if you see something, say something. If we think we're gonna rely just on the Cleveland Police Department to certainly resolve our problems, I got news for you, it's not gonna happen to the community. It takes a village to protect and maintain a neighborhood. And that's what we do in Ward 8, and that's why Ward 8 has one of the lowest crime rates in the city of Cleveland.
Thank you very much. All right, okay, I see one air right there. See another air. We're gonna get some different voices. I'll at least circle to you in just a second. I'm gonna circle around and I'll circle back to you. My name is Donna Norris. I've been a resident of both wards and currently in Ward 8. I wanted to ask the question, what kind of activities you need to get involved to get the community involved? You want, both have stated that you want the community more involved, but what does that look like? Long time ago, we used to have neighborhood watchers, community meetings where we were actively involved, block parties and things like that to bring us together. Right now, there's not anything that engages all ages of the community so that way we can become one. Thank you very much.
I'll let you go first. I got one last. Sure. So thank you for that. As I indicated earlier, you know, we, my office, not waiting on anyone else, my office has every, multiple times during the year, have tried to host several events throughout the years. Whether we are going into the schools and taking the Easter bunny and having, providing free pictures for the students in the community, in those schools. Whether it is the Glenville Festival that we have put together every year since I've been in office here at Ward 10. Whether it is, most recently, our Sunday Fun Day when we closed down 152nd Street. It had everything for youth, for our middle generation, our seniors, those who enjoy gospel, those who enjoy hip-hop, those who enjoy our beat. Recently, every year, we host our Family Fun Day, where we give away over 500 book bags to families and their youth. Each year, we hold a special day for seniors, not the senior day that the city Cleveland has as a whole. But Ward 10, every year, has kept our own Senior Day, that we recognize and we support seniors from our community in Ward 10. So again, we are, in my opinion, doing a lot to engage the neighborhood and bring people together. Because the goal is to get people out of their homes, right? You should know your neighbors on your street. You should know who lives next door to you, right? It's so many times that I visit residents' homes, right? And have conversations, and they can't tell me who live next door to them. That's a problem, because when I grew up, I knew everybody on my street, the next street, and the street after that, right? And that's how we build community. That's how we get our neighborhoods back to the place where they once were. And each year, again, we try to do more and more, and we want to continue to do that as we move into 2026. Thank you.
You know what? Let me just say this. In Ward 8, right now, we have 21 neighborhood organizations, active neighborhood organizations. And I know because I attend most of their meetings when invited. I do the mailing for many of those street clubs. So I would say, everybody in this gathering today, whatever street you live on, or whatever neighborhood you live in, get involved. We have Ms. Dorler from Houston here, from East 156th Street Neighborhood Association. I see members from the East 185th Street Neighborhood Association, former members of Nottingham Civic Club. And I know that because I was the three-term president of that in the day, and that club fell by the wayside. Yucul Park Civic Club fell by the wayside. One of my goals is to reinstitute, restart the Nottingham Civic Club, restart the Yucul Park Civic Club. We need strong neighborhood organizations. You show me a neighborhood or a street that looks good, and I'll show you a neighborhood where people are engaged. Get involved in your block club if you have one. We have different groups in the neighborhood in Ward 8. You could reach out, I could tell you, you could tell me where you live, I'll tell you what neighborhood group you can get involved in. We want you to be involved. You have a right to be able to ask questions at neighborhood meetings. I go to all those neighborhood meetings. We have the police there, we have other city officials there. I sponsored a Waterloo Arts Festival. That's my class A event I sponsor every year. Again, I'm looking at all the events that we do, whether it be at the rec center, whether it be at the libraries, whether it be in our community groups and organizations. We're very pro-neighborhood in Ward 8. But my brothers and sisters, I can't force people to come to neighborhood meetings. I can't force you to become engaged. You know, a lot of people, for some reason or another, they don't want to get engaged. They don't want to participate. Why? I don't know. It was driven into me when I was a kid growing up in this neighborhood, my mother, who was the street captain, on Clearer Road in the Nottingham Civic Club neighborhood. You get involved, you care what goes on in your neighborhood, and that's how you keep a good neighborhood. That's how you protect your kids, how you protect your neighbors. That's what we do here now, and I'm very proud of the fact. And I want to thank all the neighborhood leaders that are here for your engagement. That's why Ward 8 is one of the better places to live presently in the city of Cleveland. I want to take that same message throughout the new Ward 10.
Just as a follow-up to the question, you know, I often hear about Nottingham Civic Club fell by the wayside, here at Yucul Park, the Civic Club went by the wayside. But see, that's the problem. We get stuck in what has always been done in the past, right? And while we don't continue to have people who stay engaged, because it's the same old thing, time after time, right? And so as we journey through life, as we move forward, right? As the world changes around us, we have to change. Because if we stay stuck with the same leadership, the same style from the 70s, 80s, and 90s, we're gonna get anywhere. We're gonna continue to be flatlined. And so we have to change the way we engage individuals as the times has changed. And so when there was that generation that held down the civic clubs in our community, that's not the same level of engagement that our 20 and 30-year-olds are want to be a part of now. That has changed. And so part of it is, we have to really engage more of the 20 and 30-year-olds like myself, right? About how and the way that they want to be involved and want to be engaged. Those things work for the 40s and the 50s and the 60s and up generation, but that may not work for those who are 40 and under, right? Who may not be 45 and under. So again, engaging them in differently than maybe what has been done in the past, I can say, we have been very successful in engaging different generations because we do a variety of different things. We're not set on autopilot. We don't just continue to run the same thing time after time. Thank you.
Let me just say this, those clubs worked. They worked. Just like the 21 clubs in my neighborhood work now in organizations. So I was a kid in the Nottingham Civic Club. I was a child in the Nottingham Civic. I grew up to be the president of the Nottingham Civic Club. So when we hear this thing about things are changing, I say to you folks in attendance here, who are involved in these neighborhood groups, should we just throw them out the door?
Yes.
Should we throw them out? Of course. We welcome people in, we want young people in, we want different points of view. I'm committed to rebuilding these civic clubs in new Ward 10. I'm committed. I want to say that right now for the record. I'm committed to rebuilding the Nottingham Civic Club and the Yucul Park Civic Club. It's a tragedy that they fell by the wayside, and they're coming back.
It's a word called variety. So not everything fits for everybody, right? So you have to have, you have to have different things for different people, right? So if we have just one way to do things, then that's the reason we don't get people involved. Because it's only one way. If we have different ways for people to get involved, then maybe we can see more people getting involved. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Everybody breathe in and breathe out. Here we go. So, we're gonna have one more question. You good? Okay, we can wait till the P I O. Okay, so we're gonna go to number three. Again, after this question, we will open up the public comment, so please have your questions ready. I'll tell you when to form a line at this mic right here in a moment. All right, so for question three, this is about youth and education opportunities. Many young people in our area struggle to find safe, supportive spaces and pathways to success. What concrete steps will you take to expand youth programs, jobs, and educational opportunities?
Great question. We have, right now, we have the Prevention, Intervention, and Opportunity Operation at the Collinwood Rec Center. We are doing everything we can when kids come through the door, when people come through the door to assist them. It's working, it's working well. So let me just say this, because this is an issue that has really rubbed me over the last few years. And that is what's happened to our Cleveland public school system. Now, I'm gonna be very blunt in this room. What's happened to the East Side schools is outrageous. Schools being closed, being disinvested, taking vocational, technical programs out of our schools. Collinwood High School was once the preeminent vocational, technical school on the east side of Cleveland. We winded a hospitality program because of the young ladies in our neighborhood going, leaving Glenville and Collinwood and going to Shaw High School. Can we get, did we get it? No. Everybody in this room needs to be an activist and stop raising questions about CMSD because what did you hear this week? More schools coming. They're gonna close more schools. We're hearing up to 20 schools are gonna be closed. So we can, the city can do, we can put programs into rec centers, we can do other things in our neighborhood, sponsoring youth-related programs, like the stuff that I sponsor, supporting over for Halloween. But my brothers and sisters, we gotta capture these kids. We gotta give them opportunities. Collinwood High School saved me. My mother raised four of us by herself, and it wasn't for the programs in Collinwood that enticed me, that got me involved. I don't know what would have happened to me. I would have been probably getting out the streets. But they took that from us. We gotta get programs back for our kids. You want to address juvenile violence? You want to address the poverty and the spirit that we have? Why should our kids be denied the opportunity to work with their hands beat? HVAC, carpenters, plumbers, electricians? I could go right on down the list. They took that from us. And if we don't get it back, and we don't start demanding programs, everything around technology, computers, they took it from music, art. Come on, man, really? Really? That's, so we can talk about, the city, I believe, is doing everything we can, but we need a CMSD, we need a school system that works on behalf of our kids, and I'm committed to that.
All right. It's a little warm over in this corner. But we don't make that. All right. Thank you for the question. Great question. As we know, we know the situation with the schools, right? I tend to see them as you all my life, from K through A to middle school to high school. Stayed here, went to college, went to Cleveland State, got a master's degree, got an undergraduate degree, stayed here, couldn't go nowhere else. So we know what the problems are as relates to the school district. But the difference with me is that, instead of continuing to recite what the problems are, we're actually putting the work in to help teach young people, right? Where the school district may fall short, or the funding may fall short that they receive, this councilman is stepping up to support our young people. Not just showing up at the school to take pictures and shake hands and then walk out the door, right? Not at all. Not just coming around, you know, when something's going on, but actually doing the work. As I stated earlier, we have a teacher here, that we work with a business owner at our ward, we create a reading room for them in their classroom. A special place for the young people to gather and have quiet time to read for themselves. And we plan to expand those to other schools in our current ward. We know that funding could cut short as relates to after-school, out-of-school programming, you know, for our neighborhoods and our kids. So what I have done has stepped up and funded some of the programs that young people attend after school. Whether it is tutoring sessions, whether it is college trips, whether it is taking the young people on camping trips to Clay's Park, whether it's taking them to the State House, whether it is taking them to the morgue so they can know where they don't want to be, or jail tours where they don't want to be. But again, taking them on college tours to show them where they do want to be. Whether it is funding the third floor of our Five Point Community Center on 152nd Street, where they have a safe space to gather, where they learn in podcasting, how to do audio and technical work, right? Working with DJ Fatty Banks. We're providing them social and emotional learning opportunities and engagement, whether we are hiring them to work summer jobs in our neighborhood. So when I say that we're putting in the work, we're putting in the work. I don't do, you know, I really don't do a lot of talking, right? We actually, we try to put our head down and actually focus on the solutions, instead of continuing to recite the issues that we have. We know what the problems are. So as council people, it's easy for us to say, well, we don't hire, we don't fire, we don't deploy. We don't control the funding of the school district. But what we do have control over is some of the resources that we get, that we can put back into those organization, those programs. One of the things that I've heard from people, many years, they wanted Collinwood to become a trade center, right? We know that's a battle. We know that's a fight between us and the school district. So what we've done is, we funded organizational contractors to work directly with our youth, to show them how they can hang a piece of drywall, how they can fix electrical plug, how they can put a piece of plumbing in, in a house. And so again, we're stepping up and we're doing the work on behalf of our young people in our community. And recently, we just launched a new initiative, right? And we've been trying to do it for a while. It's finally, okay, time, it's finally kicking off, where we're providing additional funding to each of the schools in my ward to help them for whatever they want to do, whether it's after-school time, in-school break, tutoring, or whatever it is they want to do. We're stepping up, providing funding that council get to fund discretionary programs and put that money back into our schools and our neighborhoods.
Let me respond to that. I hear all these programs, I'd like to see them, I want to see them. I funded, I funded the after-school programs. Go back and who sponsored the after-school programs at city council? Who fought to get the STEM program at Hannon Givens Elementary School? You're looking at them. Because my son was in STEM program, and I felt there was not a feeder program in our neighborhood for STEM program downtown. The PIO program at the library, at our rec center, go over and look at that program. That is outstanding program in our community. You can talk, I keep hearing all these wonderful programs and all this stuff, but I don't see it. I don't see it. And so at the end of the day, are they stealth programs, or what are they? I want to see the programs that I hear, all these programs out here in the neighborhood, but I don't see any in the STEM ward. So at the end of the day, my brothers and sisters, you know what? We know what we have to do. We have to care about our kids, we have to do everything we can. I've done everything I can at city council to assist, and I'm gonna continue to do that. And that's it. And I'm here to work with my colleagues, the time that we have left in city council, on anything that will benefit our community. That's where I'm at, about working together. But I can't, I keep hearing about all this, this, and this, and this, but I don't see it. Thank you.
If I could say, if you ain't checking for the programs or checking for the people who are actually involved in it, then you wouldn't see it, right? If you're not really doing the work with the young people, then you wouldn't know about it. The young man who just walked in with the locks, he's a young man who's been with us since Hannon Givens High School, that has worked with us, he's standing up right now. Our violence intervention program, that we put our arms around that young man, has kept him with him, now he's an intern in our office, okay? Right? So hold on, let me finish, I'll let you talk, right? So, so when we talk about, is it really working? He's a testament right there. That young man is a testament. I can bring you many more and put them right in this room. All right? At the last debate or forum that we had, we had a whole row of them that were sitting with us, and they could tell you about the work that we're putting in with our young people. Again, if you don't want to hear it, then you're not gonna accept it. If you're not checking for them, then you won't know what's going on. But what I can tell you is that we're absolutely doing the work with these young men and women who live in our neighborhood. Thank you. We got teachers here too.
Let me respond. Let me respond.
One moment, we gotta open up the public comment.
Let me respond. I'm on a board at Givens Academy. I helped Ted Givens set up Givens Academy. I work over there with the kids at Givens Academy, Ted Givens.
Councilman, I'm sorry. I told you, please don't make me snatch your mic, sir. Okay. All right. I'm serious, we gotta keep time because I have to turn the floor over to you all into your questions. What you're saying, we do hear you, your concerns, we appreciate the engagement and how you are responding to us. So not to cut your time, we know that we want to give the people enough time so you can respond to that. Okay, so what we want to do now with your questions, this mic is now locked. So if you have a question, please do not run, walk, and line up to ask your questions. Thank you. And again, don't make me snatch your mic. You just saw it in real time. I didn't want to do that, to do that to my elder was very awkward, so please let us respect the time. You only have 30 seconds to ask your question, and then you can tap a C, okay? All right, thank you. Please state your name and the ward where you're from and your street as well when you ask your question.
My name is Sheila Calaway. I'm with Billings, Cleveland, Ohio, Ward 10, East 156th Street. My question is to Mr. Kulinski, you talk a lot about, I mean, a lot about advocating for crime.
Yes, ma'am.
As a BFO member, we want to know how you determine whether or not crime or a person, is it a crime particularly for a person, just anybody? Or are you related, that you folks who have that returning citizen who have been in the system?
No, I'm talking about people who've committed to crime. People who've done theirs, have served their time, they're entitled to come back into the system. They're entitled to a second chance anyway. My correction, because I'm really not fitting your question, when people, especially people...
I'm saying, we're tough on crime, like you say, you're tough on crime. We want to know how to differentiate between the two, folks who are committing the crime right now, or folks who have had felony backgrounds.
The people who have a felony background, paid their time, that's not the issue with me. It's the ones, the people who are out there committing the violence in our neighborhood. That's why you're at my activity at, in our community.
So how do you figure that out?
Well, if you came back, you're released out of the system, you're coming back into society, you're trying to get your life back together. Why should we? We're trying to help them, especially for people who are out there. But they're not even, they're not even a part of the problem anymore. The problem is the people out here in the street committing the violence.
Okay, so you plan on creating jobs for them?
Well, I fund people in, like, the Ohio Week jobs and all the other programs that we have. I try to do everything I can to assist. They are, but they did their time, they're entitled to a second chance. They're entitled to get their life together. And they're trying, most of them are trying to do that. Now, we know there's some reset opportunities, but that's the reality of it. I'm dealing with the people who are out there committing violent crimes in our neighborhood.
Okay, I won't leave the mic by saying what you say about the program, I would see that that's out.
With, with...
With two, three, five people, it's society, two houses, or...
Well, if they contact my office, I'll put them in, that's all I can tell you. Thank you, Derek. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Jordan, I'm with the AFO, Ward 10. I have a question, so you say that you are big on crime?
I'm as big as I can.
Okay, so as AFO, how do you feel about collateral sanction?
I'm not clear what collateral sanctions are.
So if you don't know what collateral sanction is, how would it...
Well, then explain it.
I'm not saying to you. Collateral sanction is when you are directly impacted because of a felony, then that means you have barriers that prevent you from being, or having the same equality as a person that Then that means you have barriers that prevent you from being, from having the same equality as a person that has never committed a crime. So that's a collateral sanction. So it is actually contradictory that you're saying that you want people to have a second chance, but you have no idea what it entails. So that also lets me know that you're not even aware that there's over 2,700 barriers that we face as collateral sanctions.
All I can say is, and all I can say is, people who reach out to me.
Why do I have to reach out to you? I've been home almost three years and it's so many of us that struggle to even do a job.
Wouldn't you reach out to somebody?
Why do I, where are the resources?
The resources, we have to reach out.
Where are all the resources, sir?
Okay, let me just say, I'm looking at what I put out here for the employment, Cleveland Employment Connection, Ohio Week jobs, foreign employment, that's what I put people into. I mean, but you gotta reach out to me. If I'm not aware of your situation, how do I know it? I think I'm trying to be as fair and transparent as I can.
I just wanted to let you know, I'm about to walk away. It's just very disappointing because it's kind of the first time I've come to a neighbor. And it's kind of very disappointing to know that you can sit there and say that you defend and you protect something and you have absolutely no idea. Collateral sanction is giving people second chance. So study it.
But if they come to us, but you guys come to us and ask for the help. I mean, I don't know what else, I can't materialize. So I'm a clear blue sky, yes.
All right, excuse me everyone. If you hear my voice clap once, if you hear my voice clap twice. Thank you. I understand that teachers can get high with these questions. I understand that everything that we are asking is purposeful and intentional and important to us. But again, disagreement does not mean division. And we are in a space for understanding. Everyone is teachable, even them, even though they hold this spot, they are teachable. So in this moment, my sister, link with him and teach him what collateral sanctions is because he just said he doesn't know. That is a teachable moment. That is community. Please ask your questions. I know we got fight in us, you understand? We've been under oppression since we were born. We have been terrorized since we were born. Our systems and our educational system is truncated and it is nothing more for us to become employees, you understand? I get it. I get it. I get it, okay? But again, we have to make space for everyone to ask questions and we have to make this a safe space so everyone can feel heard. So thank you. I appreciate it. Please don't make me put on my teacher voice again. And minimize your side comments so that he can hear what is being heard so that the people in the back can hear as well. Please go ahead, sir. Thank you.
I'm Robert Gatewood, classmate of this guy, neighbor of both of them, Ward 8, but Ward 10 too because I live in both. My question is going to be written because I talk to them enough. Gibbons-Collville High School seems to be on the cutting block. After Dr. Warren had conversations that seemed sat in there, the building can't do stuff anymore because of deferred maintenance costs and enrollment. If you were my councilman, what are you willing to commit to doing right now? In terms of working with community groups, some of them I'm involved in, to prevent demolition or deserting of our building? And working with community groups that might want to keep it active to see if that's the size of the survey.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gatewood. First and foremost, we want to fight tooth and nail to make sure Collinsburg stays open. That's first and foremost. Do I advocate to the members that we have city council members to press, press, press the school district to not close down Collinsburg? But rather put the investment into Collinsburg that we both have been fighting for, pleading for, begging for, for years, right? For years. Unfortunately, you know, it's gone on deaf ears. You know, we have a new CEO, we have now two board members, Carolyn Peet and others who's actually from Collinsburg. And so we hope, and I hope you all in here make those phone calls to her and other members on the board telling them to do not close Collinsburg High School. You're from Collinsburg, don't you dare vote to close Collinsburg High School. What you need to vote to make sure that that school is the resource that we have been begging for, for years. Okay? So we are going to advocate, we're going to press with everything we can in my position. As you know, city council members don't control, don't have any jurisdiction over CMSD. The mayor and schools are under mayor or control, right? That's between the mayor and the CEO and that board is where the decisions come from. We have to work with community organizations as we tried to before, to make that happen, before COVID. We tried to come together with a group of organizations, including Dan Moore companies, Mr. Drake and others, to put together a cohort of individuals that can work together to bring different experiences, different abilities together in order to develop this true co-working space in potential place that can be a trade school, it can be all sorts of other things in Collinsburg. My goal is to work with them, not against them, right? Because part of the reason that that failed through is because a lot of a lot of foolery was happening, right? That caused those deals to fall through that resulted in us losing the Department of Labor money. Resulted in organizations pulling back and walking away because they just felt like that they were met with fierce resistance when they came and asked for our support. We want to make sure that we give them support and not run them away. Thank you.
Let me respond. First of all, I want to thank you, Robert, for your engagement and your concern about Collinsburg High School. As most know, I landmark the building, so they cannot tear it down. They cannot tear the building down without a vote of Cleveland City Council. And as everyone knows, I'm a proud alumni member of the Hall of Fame of Collinsburg High School. I'm committed to doing whatever I can to bring progress back in there. The game that they wanted to play on is they wanted to flip Collinsburg to a nonprofit organization. And there's no nonprofit that can take care of 300,000 square feet that's 100 years old. That's the reality. So we know what the game they were playing. They wanted to shed the building, shed it period. They haven't put a dime back into the inside of the building. So all of us, as I said earlier, this room, we better be ready. Because it's just not about Collinsburg. I'm going to tell you right now, there's rumors circulating around East Park. There's rumors, again, other schools on the northeast side of the city. We have to be together. We have to demand accountability. Why should the best programs be on the west side of the city? Start thinking about that. We need to have okay children programs, all types of different programs at Collinsburg and also at Gibbsville High School as well. So I'm committed. I'm committed to what I have to do.
So I'm hearing that all of you who are elected are committed to preventing it from being demolished or deserted.
Well, they can't demolish it without a vote of city council.
So you're permitted to?
Yes. That's in given. That's all I want to say. Thank you, Robert.
I'm Marley Maitland Allen, business owner of East 185th. I have a question concerning the mental health of our neighbors in the neighborhood. There's no more psychiatric places for people with mental health to be in their, you know, medication or whatever. But it's becoming an issue in the neighborhood where there's a couple of people with mental health issues that's disturbing the peace of how everything is run and the businesses on 185th that I'm sure are different areas. So my question is, as safety director, safety chair, or I believe sir, whoever was elected, is there a plan together to find a way to help support families that have members with mental health problems? This would be something random, I'm sure, that would have to be done. But it's affecting the safety, how people feel safe in the neighborhoods by not having a mental outlet for people with mental health issues.
Well, I'm not a manager. Okay, let me say this, great concern because of the cutbacks on the federal level, the state level, and you saw the county cutback, the most county cutbacks. So I'm greatly concerned as well. People need to reach out. Now, we have the crisis intervention operation right now with the CPD. So when you call, someone calls 911 and we get, hey, this is my brother, my sister who's got an issue, a mental health issue. We're sending out now a special individual with CPD. We have to ramp that up. We're going to have, we're working at Phoenice as well right now to make sure. So when you call 911 and you say, please fire your ment- mental health community, I'm going to incorporate that in. But again, I would say, anyway, people need to reach out so we can plug them in through the various programs. But I'm greatly concerned, my brothers and sisters, about these cutbacks that are being made and all of us, as I say, at all my neighbor meetings, you know who your council people are, you know who your state reps are, you know who your state senator is, you know who your congressional people are. Express those concerns to them as well. That's a great concern and we need to do that.
Great question. I think, first of all, where we start is for us to realize and understand that those who face mental health addiction issues are not foreigners to us in our neighborhoods. That we need to embrace them, that we need to work with them, that we need to wrap our arms around them and support them because clearly they need some assistance, right? So that's first and foremost. So again, I guess we're talking about programs and we're not getting to see them, but I'm going to take you by two of them. There's an organization called NOR, Northern Recovery Association. 55th and Madison Road, 420 East 55th. I just left there because we had an event before I came here and I apologize for being late. We have worked with NOR to expand the services and programs that they provide for us in our neighborhood. We've actually included them with some of our out of school time programming that we do with our K-3 schools in our neighborhood. We also connected them with the interorganization that we work with icons in our neighborhood that provides intervention prevention work. And they have expanded the work with some of the individuals and families that they've worked with in the neighborhood as well. I also provided funding from our council discretionary dollars to further support the work that that organization is doing. I'll do you one better. We also helped them get $500,000 from city council to help build 16 new homes that are for men come out of prison to put them back with their families, their children. Nobody's doing that. Nobody else in Cleveland is doing what we are doing to support individuals coming back home from prison. Those who are experiencing mental health and addiction issues. Also in the Indian Park neighborhood, there was a place called Cleveland Motel. Problem, behavior, drugs, crime, prostitution, violence, all kinds of stuff is going on at Cleveland Motel on Ucan Avenue there. It's closed now. Safety year in office, we shut them down. Shut them down. And so now, at one point it's served as a haven for everything under the sun, it's not going to be a place that is actually going to help these individuals heal. We are investing a hundred plus thousand dollars into that project and the programs that they provide to offer more mental health and addiction treatment services right in our neighborhood.
Dave?
My name is Chris Perkins. I'm the owner of Original Real Estate Program. I approach both councilmen in the neighborhood and office, commission office. When I walk in, we were talking about small business and reaching out to small businesses. We've never reached out to a small business. I'm coming up on 20 years to tap on the cash flow. I can't even do about traffic safety. I can't even do about expansion. I can't even do about finding grass. Let me see, I've been on my deal on 15 years. I can't even hold them. I put everything on tape. I did the same thing with councilmen here. Obviously, I was helping, but I can't do it. Obviously, with not only grant from councilman Harrison, I received support. I've held parties every year for the community. I provide hair care for the kids, a gamer trainer, preschool supplies. I have some questions, Nor. Tents, except, this is my third year doing it. I've even had police. And all the time that I've been here, I've lived here a much time in every night. I've never got new visits involved in funding, early in the year, coming, and just like I came to him. He was elected in office. I pretty much know what I got as a small businessman coming from this neighborhood. I'm in fear of what I'm going to get coming from you because I've never got anything. And it's been, next year will be 20 years. I'm a staple in the community. Everybody knows about Original Real in our community. I gave away 50 cent wings to feed families on the campus. That's all I could afford. But with more funding, with more help, with more community support, I could have did more. I have a huge following and I have a lot of support. I have people who have been wrongly convicted of crimes, they support them. I got just a lot of people in the community that keep it short, that support our journey. And I like giving back to my people. But in the course of 20 years, I came about the accidents that happened on that strip. I had the traffic lights and the speed. I've witnessed at least 20 times accidents since 1999, traffic accidents. And they even took the light that we have on 171st. So my question to both parties. Small businessman like myself, what are we to expect? I know what I got just as he was in office. I have nothing to show.
But I don't represent that area.
You did it a long time.
A long time ago.
I've been here 20 years.
Okay, a very long time ago, I represent that area. So the only thing I can say is this, I try to assist everybody I can. Now, some people think I can somehow make the economic development department or I can somehow materialize money. I try to help every person that comes to me. I have not represented that area in a very, very long time, okay? So all I can say, if you felt that I didn't help you adequately in the day, then I apologize for that. But I try to help everybody I can. You've been in that area for, through two councilmen, two previous councilmen. So that's all I can tell you. I like to think I try to help everybody I can. So if you felt that I didn't help you in in the day a long time ago, then I apologize. So.
It was a serious struggle for years and that's why I came to, because I wanted to do something different. I believe at the time we wanted to relocate to a nicer area, but that's not where my money is. I purchased these properties. I'm already invested. I was asked for, you know, the game, after this property was paid. I spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to buy this commercial lot. I didn't get here.
But you had two councilmen, two councilmen before, after. And so I didn't represent that area for a very long time. That's all I can say. Again, if you felt that I didn't help you, then I apologize for that.
Thank you. Well, I guess I would say the question is, at that time, the individual felt like they did not receive the support from my colleague when he was the councilperson there. Absolutely. As I stated earlier, we are, we're going above and beyond to support the small businesses in our neighborhoods. Whether it is investing discretionary dollars that city council gives to support these small businesses. Whether it is helping them push through zoning issues they may have, it's called the Plankett Department. Whether it is permit that they have in a hard time to get through building a housing, we are supporting our small businesses. As my colleagues indicated earlier, you know, small businesses don't have these team of people who can go down and who have these deep relationships within city hall. It is up to us, the city councilors, as well, just as we do with residents, to support them. Even if they don't live in the neighborhood, they have a business in our neighborhood, right? They're supporting our neighborhood. And we are helping them work through problems that we have. For example, in the same area where Original Real is located, we're working with several small businesses along that corridor to help them with their storefront renovation. We're helping them reconfigure the roadway that's there because if you know St. Clair coming off the road nine and a half, it is a raceway, okay? And so we work on traffic engineering to address the traffic and safety concerns that exist along that corridor. So we'll put the time in to work with our small businesses and as council, if we were elected again in November, we'll continue to work with our small businesses in our community. We have individuals through our office who work directly with small businesses so that they can have greater access. Who can help them maybe sometime quicker than I can, depending on what's going on at city hall. That can connect them to the individuals in the departments to help them get through whatever they are looking to get done in relation to their business. Thanks, thank you.
If you will speak to me. My name is Jamie Jones. My question, if you're here.
Forty-seven.
I'm sorry?
Forty-seven. Forty-seven.
Forty-seven years.
Seven years.
Seven years. I'm looking at this. It's time. It's definitely time. New blood. I agree with all of you. I love you here and I'm very grateful for me to answer your question. My question is, I'm so sorry, everybody. My question is, is there ever going to be any newness for the children? We need parks for kids. We need safe parks for kids everywhere.
Well, let me respond because he, Councilor Harrison, this is fun. Again, just to the side of this wonderful library, we acquired, transferred the property on September 4th. The property to the Metro Park. We're going to create a 150 acre park right here along Lake Shore from the park. I'm finishing Nuff Park Playground, rebuilt Trauma Playground, got a plan for Humphrey Sports Complex. United Rexson, just put a new playground there. So we have really focused on recreational opportunities in our community and I plan to continue to expand it throughout the year. Let me just say this, because you mentioned about time in office. I'm very proud of my time in office. I will put my record, my legislative record, my attendance record and my voting record against anyone who's ever served in the county. Against anyone. So with that initial advantage, there's experience and proven results. I didn't get elected 12 times by an accident. I got elected 12 times because I do my job. I'm a full-time councilman. I'm not running any businesses on the side. I'm not involved in LLCs on the side. I do what I have to do to protect these favors. I'm proud of that side. I'm very thankful for the residents who have supported me. I'm humbled by the support they've given me over the years. And again, I will tell you, if my colleagues want to challenge me to a footrace, I'm glad they would be, okay? So if you think I'm too old, I'll put you to the test, okay? And I'm glad you do that right now. You're doing awesome, okay?
Y'all hear that, right? Parking not racist. Parking not racist, okay? Who y'all got your money on? The pool is in the back. Place all bets are missing.
He's too old.
It's called. You can take the mic off. Detach the mic. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
My name is Shirley Kenness. I have a branch of the organization named Positivity. Positivity exists to restore belief in community and purpose to people. I'm not a resident of the community, but I'm actually a resident of South Houston, but there's no place like home. So I dedicated the last seven years of my life to making impact in this city, to change the gendered race behind me. I'm 35 years old, so I have the wisdom of the older generation and I have the curiosity of younger generation skill. So my question, we have, as LGM would say, a public health crisis, right? We have done by itself constantly. I just wore 10, not just a war gate, but throughout the city, week. So my question is, you councilman, whichever one of you guys does go into this election. So, my question is, this is you, councilman, whichever one of you guys does go into this election, actually wrote it out, so you kind of think about this one. How will you engage young people in the conversation about gun violence? Not just as victims, but as part of the solution?
Let me respond to that. And first of all, I want to thank you for your engagement, your participation, and I hope, when you send it, you deliver it to South Houston. I hope you come back home, because this is where your roots are at. The big issue with gun violence is one that troubles me greatly. I, I dealt with the situation of a hundred and eighty-fifth, or seventeen-year-old young man, good student, minding his own business, going in a store, was willfully tracked, was stalked, and shot in the back of the head. And now, US Marshal Service is looking for the seventeen-year-old shooter. This whole issue with the availability of guns is insane. The people in Columbus, when they voted to allow everybody to have a gun, was one of the biggest mistakes ever made in this state. People are carrying guns in their cars, and young people are breaking in, kids are breaking into these cars that we've seen all over the news, taking their guns. We've got to appeal to them, that the answer is not a gun, is put the gun down, if you need help, reach out. If you're having an issue in the school, I would hope that the teachers and the administrators would come forward as well. We've got to identify the kids. Ted Ginn has gone out of his way, he's got a community program at Kid Academy, and I'm very supportive of him. The majority of the kids, he, he can save, but there's some that are going out of Catholic, regardless of what he does, and we know that. So, all I can say is, I'm all, I'm open, I'm open for any suggestions from anyone on how you think we can tap in or touch these kids that are thirteen, fourteen, fifteen years old, picking up guns and going out in the streets and doing whatever they want to do, because we're, we're all, we're all experienced here. I'm, I'm tired of standing in a funeral home, I'm tired of going to funerals, I'm tired of... I was with the mom in the room a week ago, when she viewed the video at the prosecutor's office of her son being murdered. I don't have to tell you what that was like. I, I've seen too, that's too many times, so, I don't open. I don't think anybody in this room has an answer for the gun violence right now. Education, we are just education and poverty, lack of our, I could go down all the list. Schools, parenting, it's a challenge for all of us. So, with your program, you have any ideas, any thoughts? I'm more than willing and open to listen to what you have to say. And I think all my citizens, city council, we'd tell you the same thing.
Well, I definitely have a collection of that, so you can come see me after. All right, moving on.
Thank you. You know, raised where I was raised, and, you know, folks I was around growing up, you know, I, I, my view is a little bit different, right? The one that I call typically, most of the time, is, is some sort of trauma. Some sort of trauma that has occurred in that young person, that middle-aged person, even that old person in life, that has forced them, pushed them in the direction that they've gone in. Nobody wakes up to someone to go out here and kill somebody. Somebody wakes up and saying, I'm gonna go out here and commit these crimes. That's, that, that just doesn't happen, right? Typically, majority of the time, most of the times that I interact with individuals, right, has been because some trauma that they've experienced in their life, all right? In the conversations that I have with, with, with young people, right? Even the young, young people who are working right in our office, right? Or young people who we hired this past summer, right? Not only do we just hire them, they cut grass, they clean up the community, you know, we, we, we really have real discussions with them. We bring places like Journey here, we bring places like Red Price and Century into sit and have discussions with some of these young people. The stories that you hear, you know, and even adult to the parents, right? Some of the stories that you hear are, are heartbreaking, right? And because of the, the, the trauma that, you know, I've experienced, because of the, um, the, the stories that you hear, that's why we pride ourselves on making investments into more middle-of-addiction treatment services, right? Because we know some of the situations that the parents and those are facing in the house, who are raising the young people, right? That's why we have tried to invest in expanding programs that provide safer, affordable housing in our neighborhood, right? We recently secured three million dollars from War Team to build new affordable home, state homes, for those who don't have high levels of income. That's why we are working hard to make sure our fifty million dollar sites investment fund makes, makes, uh, become reality, so that we can provide all levels of job opportunities for the community, put people back to work. That's why as councilperson and Chair DPS, we're leading the hundred million dollar housing investment fund that will help communities like Hollywood, jobs, stable housing, mental health, addiction treatment services, support for our youth. That's why we fund the Five Point Center. I'm the only person that funds the Five Point Community Center. That third floor is dedicated to young people, to have a safe space for them, including the lower level, who's dedicated to our seniors, who use our hot meals and proper has that too.
So, we are going to, it is now seven forty-six. The thing is, we only have about twelve more minutes. So, everyone standing in line, this is the fire room. Ask your question within fifteen seconds. Councilman, you only have sixty seconds to answer this question. Um, we want you all to eat, we have food, we have food to, to shovel the streets. So, we do want you to get this food, also if you have not registered. We want you to go and check out the N A A C P. Please, they are doing voter registration on there, have a conversation with them, and check the masks in the wards, and make sure you know what your precinct is and what that looks like. So, again, thirty seconds on the mic for our people, sixty seconds for the councilman, G O.
Good evening, my name is Lauren Gocheck, and I'm from the East Washington district area, the East Shore part of the city. And my question to both of the candidates is, we're at day twenty-two of federal shutdown, twenty-one days. And what I, what I'm asking is, have you all been had the opportunity to reach out to the constituents in the ward who may have been fired or laid off due to the shutdown?
Uh, first of all, I want to thank you for your engagement and labor. Those who have contacted me, I've plugged them into the Food Bank Resource Center on South Water, the road, something I'm very proud of. With ten million dollars in the Food Bank, I sponsored that legislation. So, that's where I've been plugging people in right now to contact in my office, and to continue to do. That, that shutdown is outrageous, which is taking place at this point.
Uh, short of, yes, actually I had a couple people that reached out to us. Uh, we've actually reached out and connected them with federal legislators as well. So, in case they have additional programs or services that they provide, that we can provide. Our Five Point Center, we expanded, rolled our C D C windows, and expanded the pantry operation that we provide there. Uh, we, we, we also have, we've reached out to other local organizations, uh, to work with them, if they provide additional resources such as gas, cars, air cars, and a couple of challenges, you know? And actually, a couple of residents have reached out and said, hey, you know, how can you support individuals who may be facing difficulties? One of our residents brought some baskets today to us, to give to those who may be in need.
Thank you very much.
Donna Norris, I know you both well, so I'm saying this, y'all know I love the kids. We have an increased number of students with disabilities. And I know y'all both have sponsored parks. Have the parks been more sensory-oriented, or given a time for parents to be able to take their kids, take them to the park, where it is soundly safe for those who are deaf, those who are have autism, that have trouble with the extra senses of other children, if there's a place and a time for them to be able to explore? Because most of our increased numbers are in both of your communities.
Yeah. I didn't understand the first part of your question.
The students who live with the parks, have you increased the expectations of the parks to have what they can play in?
The, the parks, well, the, the parks...
The parks are like, the south had a wheelchair bound. Is there a swing, or the swing at the wheelchair can be locked in, so that they don't be able to utilize it? In newer parks, a lot of them, but one of the main, you know, areas for one of our kids that come from disabilities is from this northeast area.
Well, you know what, what's important, we had a series of meetings on Nuff Playground, we had a series of meetings on Humphreys, et cetera. So, where the citizens, where the parents and citizens made those recommendations, those suggestions were implemented in the parks. That's all I can say. The planning went into based on what was asked at the neighborhood meetings.
What I would say that some of the renovations that has occurred, that have occurred up to this point, have not really featured, as you know already, uh, specific places for young people who, their families who have disability or physical disabilities. Uh, but I am committed to, you know, my son who also, uh, who has his own disability, to ensure that any future park renovations or enhancements will require, whether I have to fund it myself, it will get done to add, uh, different aspects for the young people and their families to enjoy when they go to the park.
Hello, how you doing? My name is Earl Saylor. I'm a resident of Cleveland, I have been on both sides, I'm on St. Clair Avenue, my entire life of living, except for fifteen years I was in prison, wrongly convicted. Since I've been home, I've been doing other positive things in our neighborhoods, in our communities, for our youth, and other leaders in the community. It's upcoming November twenty-second, we have our sixth annual turkey drive. And Councilman Harrison, always on deck, frontline center, don't date to our turkey drive. It's held at Collegeville High School in the Park Lot, every year. I've visited, I'm asking you right now, for the people. I'm here today, last year we had all five hundred and fifty turkeys. This year, we're trying to get a thousand turkeys to the city. And I'm asking you to help me as much as I can be, the host, positive energy, original grill, we do this every year. There are those who write a thousand turkeys into your community.
Thank you for your support.
We're just a little part of that group. You know, I'm, I'm locked in, been locked in, you know, continue to support, whether we're here or not, absolutely. In addition to that organization, we also each year provide over eight hundred turkeys in hand to families around our community. Uh, we opened up the list, whoever calls, signs up, they are, uh, put on the list, and receive a turkey in hand from us. And we do that every single year that I'm in office.
And I, and I'm gonna continue to collect people into the, uh, the Food Bank Resource Center. That's something I feel very strongly about, I work, I support. So, we have a lot of our residents go in there, and they can get much more than just hands of turkeys. They can get all kinds of help as well, assistance.
How you doing, Ron Crowe, you doing a female high, feel organized? My question is pertaining to the county, the county councilman, person, how, when will the resident, because he only just turned ten, this is a four-day, fourteen. When will we be able to meet count? Because he makes decisions every four days.
I'm not sure of that question.
Uh, the county council meets every second and fourth Tuesday of the month, uh, each night in, in Prospect. Uh, they meet at five o'clock, you can always engage the councilman there. I would suggest reaching out to his office, uh, or, uh, by phone or email, and try to reach him, and, and set a timer to, to come.
There's a separate councilman for the county that covers our...
Right, they're just preparing, so, you know, if us, as residents understood that, not only do we have city council, we have county council. The county council makes overall decisions on budgeting.
And especially on social services, so that's where the county council is very important. And you're welcome.
I was gonna give you one, you mentioned overall, the county county's council person doesn't make the budget decisions overall, it's both he and I.
You make it on city level.
Right, we, we, we're working together, county level, city level, there's, there's different budgets, different impacts, different things that we, we address.
We don't affect social services.
Yeah, I always say that because sometimes they think that all the issues fall on city council, but I understand that you also have council.
Good point, sir. Listen up, everybody.
Good evening, I'm Elaine again, and the same question I got from Councilman Harrison. My question to you is, the eight years you've been in office, tell me what you've done in War Ten. And one more thing, Lauren told me, Lauren told me, you were about to attack, you threatened. So, I want to know, what makes you think that I was going to you, because I didn't know news, we don't know about food distribution, I didn't even know about this meeting, you tell me anything about this. I know nothing about meetings because you don't like me personally. So, because you don't like somebody personally, that's not anything to do with you doing your job. And I'm offended, and I'm still offended by that threat that you gave me, that's why I called out, I'm telling you. But my question is, maybe three years ago, you told me you were building a new house. That was when I bought that land bank house. And let me, and before I bought that land bank house, I had twenty-nine other houses. I didn't even know you could buy a land bank house, and that's great.
Thank you, man, let him answer your question. Let him answer your question, your main question was, what has he done in the eight years that he's been here in War Ten? And the communication gap that you have experienced between being a resident in War Ten, Councilman Harrison?
Thank, thank you, LJ. Uh, first and foremost, I don't know you personally, so I can't have a personal problem with you, that's first and foremost. Uh, secondly, uh, we can point to many things that are here, but I'm proud of the work that we, the neighborhood, achieved since the time I came through, uh, here as councilman of War Ten. There's not a place in our war, an area in our neighborhood, that has not seen growth and advancement. Then Uka Park where you live, for example, uh, you know, we came in, Uka Avenue was filled with abandoned buildings, boarded up, uh, properties that were drug-infested, crime, and so forth. When you ride down Uka Avenue, down between Ida Hall and Green Road, you don't see that, that those abandoned buildings that we once saw when I came into office. And the few that are there are actually on the renovation. We have one that will be new veteran housing for people right in our neighborhood. We just secured, uh, almost a million dollar grant to do, uh, street skate, you know, appearance uplift for Uka Avenue. It's called a T L C I, we, we, we love all across the city, so we really secure that, uh, for, uh, that, uh, neighborhood. You know, when you look at Nine and a Half Villages, again, when I took over in that community, we had boarded up buildings, we had, uh, buildings, the properties that had stood as I saw for decades. But now, when you go to Nine and a Half Villages, we welcome the new Goodwill Outlet Center and the Job Opportunity Center that now occupies a space that was once abandoned for decades, right? We also, the old Club Nine and a Half Village, that's opened up, that's now a monument, I call it a shop, a soon-to-be renovated restaurant there. We, we've invested in our residential streets above the standard allocation that each council member gets every year. So, above what we get, we've invested more in terms of our treaty services, uh, here in our neighborhood. Just a few things that we've learned from Congress, in the short time that I've been here, also from the city council.
Thank you very much, man. Please know that, they are speaking of how I'm happening, so any questions, you can ask them.
My name is a member of the number one, I'm a regular, I do have one thing, I want to ask you, Mr. Harrison.
Listen up, everybody, please.
Uh, okay, I, um, I live in between three abandoned houses. One is on the right side of me, you said, it's condemned now, true enough, it was been down for like six years. The animals are coming all on my side of my property. And just last night, on the left side of me, someone broke into that house, I had to call the police. So, I'm fearing for my safety, do you have any idea of where this property on the right side of me is gonna be torn down? I'm in between forty-one in front of me and one in its side of me, I'm, I fear for my safety. I have to get out of the car with my gun every night, so I need to know. Do you have any idea, or you can get that with me, and let me know when you think that...
I'll answer it now, all right? That's it, I'll answer it right now. So, absolutely, I know where you are, we, we communicate, yes, you have a house on the right and on your left. The house, if you're on the curb, look at your house, basically the street, the house on eleven is nineteen eighty-eight, red carpet. The house is, we worked with the county of Land Bank to have that house demolished. Uh, it is going through the contracting process to come down. As you and I discussed in the past, why that house did not come down, because there was an order. No matter how much, uh, we dislike or like it, there's an order to some property, I'll be, there's an order of every property that we have that's in our city, right? Whether we like it or whether we love it. And unfortunately, there are laws that protects property rights, uh, for some cases, uh, throughout city, county, and, and, and the US. And so, we had to work through the legal process in order to get control, in order to have that house knocked down. Now that we have been able to, uh, de-control, that house will be coming down. The house on the right, as you know, was caught up in probate, uh, between four, five, and six siblings who were on the property. And so, that house is going through that probate, the probate process to come down, uh, to, 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 for something to happen to that, uh, particular property and so on. I believe that process is nearing, but what we tried to do whenever we reached out, whenever that grass has been out, we dispatched our special War Ten crew to make sure the grass is being cut. When you're dumping at the house, if you call, we make sure we send somebody out to pick up the legal dumping, and open the property. So, we will continue the legal process to work to do that.
You can tell there's a concern about last night's night.
Understood, absolutely, yes, and I ask the police to pay special attention to the area, thank you. Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you very much. Nice words, man.
This is clever, this ain't my person. My name is Vince Evans, I'm a community violence instructor, I work for several organizations. Currently, I'm working with Project Ripple and, uh, I'm sorry, Together We Rise, and we will, we will be working in the following year. My question is very simple, can we expect support regardless of who wins? Because as you spoke of, I... Because as we spoke with Icons, what I've discovered is, a lot of times, I work for peacemakers, a lot of times, the established organizations get the attention, while other organizations that aren't as established get the door. So as we move forward, can we expect, as we start doing this throughout this community, as we walk into this community, talking to the people, we're here at nighttime, and when we talk about the pandemic, and you talk about programs for kids and whatnot, I respect that, but here's the issue. The kids that's up here at these gas stations, this smoke, I mean, this smoke weed, they carry pistols, it's not going to any program. These are the ones we're reaching out to. Can we expect you all to support as we're doing this? Because we don't be out here one o'clock in the morning, two o'clock in the morning, making sure that people like the lady here on Rayborn feel safe if we have to walk past there every night. Can we expect you all to...
Let, let me respond. I totally support, and I commend what peacemakers are doing, Icons, all the other groups that we have funded, most of them come before the Safety Committee, which I chair. We're going to continue to do that. As you hit a random head, they're not going in a rec center. They're not going in any other programs. You better touch them in the street, you gotta, you gotta physically touch them and talk with them. So I'm committed to do whatever we can, we need more violence interrupters on the street and in the street. I've done that, I've demonstrated it through our safety committee, we're going to continue to fund the programs through the Cleveland Foundation. We put money there, we're going to put money in other programs and initiatives. You've got my word and my commitment, come January first, I'm going to continue to support what we've been doing and expand those programs.
Mr. Vess, absolutely. We do that now, and as it relates to the funding, that organization that I mentioned, that we, that we provide support to, it's not so much that they are established and have to establish for your, or their, your organization. It's because I believe in the work that they do, the results that they are providing, the work that they're putting in that I'm aware of, right? And, and the outcomes that they are able to yield across our neighborhood. Not, not one organization or one person can handle, uh, every single thing, right? It takes us collectively, as we, as we are here today, and we'll continue to do, to address the problems that we have. And it also requires a lot of investment in programs like yours, as I've said earlier, that more investment in mental health and addiction treatment services, right? More investment in stable housing, more investment to youth programs, more investment to programs that does support, uh, the, 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 to raise into young people, uh, in our community, right? All our investments that I'm currently doing, not that I want to do, not that I promise you I'm going to do, that I am doing right now in our community, yes, we will continue to that, and that means also for your organization. You proving yourself, uh, to be an organization that is truly, a neutral organization, is truly about the people, and, and your heart is at the right place, absolutely, we will support you all.
Thank you, thank you.